Let's get started, say the pledge. Ian, we've got everybody here tonight, Jeff, so we've got a quorum, it's good. There were no changes to the reg, to the agenda that we've got here, right? Didn't hear anything, so. I don't know if anybody else has got anything?
No, I will make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Tell me, make some motion, and Sarah does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, consent agenda, any last minute changes on that, or Brent, any changes? Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I will.
And we does a second, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries. Council minute, meeting, minutes from the last meeting, any changes or corrections we need to make on that one?
I didn't see anything, I'll take the motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for me second.
Okay.
Second.
Sarah made a motion, Chelsea did a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Okay, public comment, anybody you got anything you want to chit chat about tonight? Going once, going twice. Alright Al, I do know you, but introduce yourself anyway, Al, sir. Jim, you wanna give an update?
Well, they're back working this week, Al, setting up temporary water on Cheyenne and West Rivers. Next week, they'll be back there in full force, working on the water mains and fixing up. Well, they're doing a little bit of the bottle patching today, but maybe not all, it's terrible. I'm sure you guys are hearing that all.
Yep.
So, full crew next week, partial crew this week, setting up temporary water. What's the timeline, as far as when they can fix it? Yeah, so what are we gonna be able to drive on these streets again without getting the house out of our vehicle? Temporarily, next week. But permanently, as far as asphalt being placed and all that, it's gonna be a while.
What are you guessing? You think two months still?
I think they'll get all of this side of town done.
Speaking of crappy roads, um, what were the roads that we were on the other day? Do you remember the names where there was like, stuff all over the roads? I was gonna talk to Brent about having the inspectors make sure that they're talking to the developers, because it was really bad.
Maple Farms was the other.
And then there was one over in Lost River, Bunker, what's that road? Bunk? What's the name of the road? In Lost River? No, Bunkman, Bunker, what is that? Bucks? We gotta get those developers to clean it up, because you couldn't even drive without running over something, it was bad.
So, we need to notify them, or the city?
I know, I did, like, say hello to Brenton today.
Yeah.
Stormwater is a push right now. Pushing them. A response.
Okay.
Sometimes challenging, still pushing them. Simple different stormwater violation ones.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I mean, this was like, wood chunks and garbage, it was really gross.
If they're, if they're not, uh,
Okay.
And one of the things they're gonna claim is that it was the wind, you know, that was one thing too, but they're not securing their stuff either, so it blows into the street, so, there's that as well. Yep, seen that too.
Well, these were like literal, like, materials that were like in the road that you had to like swerve around to make sure you weren't running over, and who knows, maybe you are running over a nail, I don't know, but.
So, Jim, if they're not gonna do those roads for like two months, um, we definitely need to keep up on the potholes better, cuz even, you know, the stop on Wall and Cheyenne was so dangerous, cuz you kinda, you couldn't even really drive it, and so you're driving on the wrong side of the road, and then if somebody were to turn, it's just really dangerous. Yeah, Cheyenne Drive. But just in general, I think we need to keep after them.
I think they kind of threw their pants there when it was raining every other day. Supposed to be back in this weekend.
Yeah, they had it really nice last fall, so I thought they were like, you know, gonna pave it, so I'm kinda surprised to hear it's still gonna be a while.
Okay, alright, anybody got anything else you wanna talk about? Yes, introduce yourself.
Hi, um, I'm Charlotte Pop, and I'm a resident of this neighborhood, and I did, you know, for those of you that did respond to me, um, and I guess I'm just here, I want to express my concerns regarding the black backflow of water from the river in our development. Um, more specifically, again, just dating parents as many that have young children, the devaluation of our and we're still on those, um, the cost for replacing trees and grass, um, farmer having to carry flood insurance in an area that is and just in general, not being able to buy our property. It, this concern has been an issue since we built our house, um, and the city hasn't been able to take action. There have been personal conversations, phone calls, um, that have been made by my husband and residents at the neighborhood, um, so this is an and I guess I'm, I'm just speaking your verbal and your attention to this issue, um, as the city has been well aware of this for many years. And it's frustrating, and lots of different things from different people, um, at the cities, engineers, um, things from lots of different, we want a resolution.
Okay. Jim, I think that was something we had talked about on the, you know.
Putting a sub bill, support check bill in that, like, went through authorization at a contractor to do it.
You had a contractor to do that, so we were gonna do it?
Fire suggested this be put in there, manufacturer came off, they looked at the application, because they yeah, to the application, and they got very, very accurate in your interior wall, or your side diameter of your pipe. He came out, looked at it, and he said, there's a potential for seven buildup, because it's seven buildup already, so I don't think that it's just gonna build up, and the whole that, five whole units, it's just gonna that was the year before last, and last year was dry, so it's been last year, so now, here we are this year, water goes up, backs up in addition, here we are. Uh, the next thing that we're going to get for curious, just stop logs, stop that, would have been an existing handle, we could retro fit it. Sure, from the contractor who put it in originally, that it, the ability to put those stop logs in there, I wanna have to replace it, it's a pretty structured, if you have to, but as the water goes down, we retrofitting will stop, let me stop that backing up to River's Edge, but also create a hole, because right now, the access from that structure to the river is blocked by two fences, there's an easement there, two fences in the way, so, uh, getting anything permanent off to the river challenge is due to proximity.
So specifically, where is this water backing up?
Cheyenne River.
But I mean, where in the development is it backing up?
So there's a low spot where there's a culvert out to the river.
A culvert, like a ditch?
Yeah, well, they have ditches.
Concrete plant, reinforced concrete plant.
Okay.
It goes out to the river, and the river that's low water level, so as soon as it comes up, backs up that pipe, backs up the old ditches, and along there, they're like.
Oh, so like water goes where it's supposed to go when it backs up?
Well, it stays in the low spot, yeah.
Okay.
I, I actually drove out to your house.
I, I went out too, cuz I wanted to see what was going on, and I need to understand the concern, so, at a period of high water with the river, the concern is that you have water, overflow water from the river, that's backing up into ditches, so it's doing, the ditches are doing exactly what they're supposed to do?
No.
No, are the ditch, what, what?
The problem is just not taking on water, so it's going into the backyard.
Okay.
And I believe in there was planned by the developer, part of the plans by the off the dock, that wasn't done.
Is that the duck bill thing you were talking about?
So, the original glass didn't fall, any type of a flat gate or anything like that, on the end, it was just river, the asphalt provided by the developer, get it, they're getting here, why it wasn't put on by the project.
But doesn't a flat gate indicate the need for pressure to open that, so those ditches would have to be full of water no matter what for that flat gate to do anything?
Otherwise, it's gonna hold water.
Right.
So you'd need to have pressure on the side as it's saying, there's water. Sure, to get a heavy rain on the flat gate on there, it'll build back up.
Is there some planning for the future development to the north to solve some of the problem, or?
There are some provisions in River's Edge 2, for stormwater, to take some of that water, that's on what's going in west of River's Edge, might be the pickup on the backside of River's Edge, and on the
That would pull it out of there and have a place to help.
Yeah, a place where people.
I, I can tell you that this development strikes me as very similar to the one that I live in, because we have overflow drainage from a field that comes into my development, right? And so, the development that is going to be occurring over the course of the next several years will address that, but for the time being, where I live, there's not a whole heck of a lot that can be done until such time as that gets developed, if that makes sense. And so, I believe that you have a similar situation, but I'm not an expert, I don't live in your development, but I'm listening to what you have to say, and I'm curious, would you, in the interim, until such time as something comes, be interested in looking at doing some construction to the streets, or putting in something that would ascertain, or I should say, uh, take care of that drainage?
I don't know if there would be, Jim, I think this is, I mean, other than adding another pumping mechanism to pump it over the wall, basically, but.
That's, that's the problem, so.
But we're still gonna have leakage going back in again, even if you pump it over, it's still gonna come back in. No, I mean, but I mean now. Right, that's what I mean. To pump it out.
Yeah.
Great.
Do we, do we have any idea when the River's Edge 2 project might be, uh, going? I know it's been talked about, I just didn't know if there's been any more movement on it or not.
Yeah, tomorrow on it, and I think now, I guess, there's supposed to be change in the staff pushing.
But is that something that they're looking at to getting on this year?
I think it would be potentially good this year, but the structure.
Next year, okay.
Is River's Edge 2 gonna do any
Offward.
This is the discussion about using ditches for that.
Can I ask, how long have you been at that house?
Since, 2000.
Okay, how many, just out of curiosity, how you've had water in your yard every year?
And this has been, um, as I stated, or as a resident, it's
Like, I know there's probably water in the ditch, but it actually goes into your yard?
Yes.
Okay.
This has been a problem with
Yeah. Well, I think, um, as far as I'm concerned, hearing what Jim has to say, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but it sounds like we're trying to come up with solutions for you. Um, as far as, you know, we, we can't really do anything right now if we're flooded, right? Is that my understanding? So there's probably nothing that you're gonna be able to do right now, considering there's too much water there. Um, but I do think that what I'm hearing from them is that between the, the next development that's being applied for and proposed is also gonna help alleviate that, um, and we'll be able to possibly look at that solution with whatever the developer was planning on putting in, in the first place. And apparently, according to what they're saying, you know, it doesn't sound like, it, it was, it was privately funded, um, what would, would you say, what was it called, that they were gonna put in? Yeah, so.
After.
After the fact.
After the fact.
Yeah. But at that time, Carla, we can't like force, you know what I'm saying?
When we annex properties, we hit the grandfather properties into the city, meaning we don't then go back to the proposed annexed area and require people to come up to speed fully to city ordinance if they happen to be in violation. And so, it's something that we like to look at over a period of time, and where there's an opportunity and a possibility to go ahead and bring things up to ordinance, and opt-a-code we do. However, if this came in as an existing situation, I guess, um.
Right.
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, there's, there's progress, it's just very slow. So, I, I mean, I, it, it sounds like at this point, the develop, the new development is kinda the solution that we're, we're leaning on.
It's part of it.
Part of it.
So, let's, okay, so, I understand where you're coming from, Carla, so, Jim, let's look at that a little bit, we can re-explore some of what those solutions might be. Cuz I gotta get an idea of what we're looking at here, cost-wise, too, and then what, what the, uh, River's Edge 2 project, how that'll help. I know it won't solve it, but how it'll help, you know, what we would need to do. No, I understand. Understood. Okay, we've heard the conversation here tonight, we're gonna start looking at it, so we can get an idea of what we're dealing with, okay? So, thank.
I wasn't there, Carla, and she wasn't either, and Jeff wasn't either, so I think now, I think, you know, I hear you, I'm not gonna let it go, we'll come, we'll try to come up with a solution for you um, and your neighbors, because we don't want you guys to be drowning either, you know.
We don't, but I think that there needs to be a, a realistic understanding that this, this isn't something that's gonna happen yesterday, it's gonna take time. It's something that, it sounds like, has gone through several different reiterations, and unfortunately, you've gotten some conflicting information, probably because there's been conflicting solutions, and depending upon the level of the river, water levels and whatnot, opens up different avenues for what could potentially be done here, but realistically, it sounds like we are looking at the possibility of not only working with the developer for another phase that will provide some relief, but also looking at the possibility of exploring some things, however, as a city and as a neighborhood, we need to determine what we wanna spend on that. Because I'm willing to bet that you and your neighbors are probably like, we don't wanna spend anything.
Well, I think we look forward to
Good. Because if you're looking to seek a solution, there might be a cost share possibility for something like that. You're welcome.
Thanks, Carla, I appreciate you reaching out.
Okay, anybody else got anything they wanna talk about? Okay, we'll move along then to Jesse or Craig, I don't know who wants to start. Okay. That's fine, yeah. But don't tell your boss, okay?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't take anything, so, I take account of it. I thought it was further along. Alright, so there was 146 calls for services. I got a bird living progress away from high school, with the individual who has the chart. Like this, there was seven more. As always, we rely on official persons. The activity they make, they might as being suspicious, as a reminder, the continued high water and precipitation, it's a violation and from driving around the road both time. There's also a class being missed here to work with the county, to highways, very much objects, as interviewed highways, mentioned, also face civil restitution to the townships or governing bodies to which the roadways belong. I actually wrote that before. Whole number of calls and everything else, I guess, that were actually fairly decent for the month. Other than construction, say, or there's like, any heard for, and unfortunately, if they happen on my watch, and I take that kind of personal. They appear to be very, very kind of smashing grab tools, from a lot of these citizens. I try to be everywhere I want, but I can't, unfortunately.
Was there a specific area that they were targeting, or was it just random?
Kind of surprises me with
Yeah, that's what I'm surprised too.
But my thought is, it's coming in on the last, I mean, just something, they were very kind of quick, smashing grab.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Do have some potential suspect vehicles, so watch the or again, be something especially weird times, and I know some of these contractors work really late out here, but usually they'll work up three or four in the morning. Call, I hear it a lot, citizens say they don't wanna bother us, but any of us, it's not a bother, I'd rather catch the guy doing it than
Right, yeah, so I was gonna say, like, in Lost River, there's quite a few that have cameras on the street, so make sure you let me or something know, and I'll make sure everybody out there is aware, so like, if there is some footage that didn't. Okay.
Did a good job again.
Good.
Saying the one over at the high school, that was me driving around, um, that's why you guys have us down here, and we drive around on these streets, and you're like, you got that car blown, that car blown, let's have anyone.
Right, yeah.
This is one I've actually dealt with personally. Why, me, the truck, I need, I need reach out, uh, with the department, they brought a K-9 down just for resources, cuz of the large building, more, yeah. Their help, we were, to drive the individual out, and First Deputy Krause, he actually that looked really good. I was just gonna say that they did a really nice job with that. They, uh, as soon as they was out there suspicious activity, called the resources, so being the person that they're just called proactive police work, um, and then just add 27, you know, see these stuff suspicious, they don't need to call us. The only other thing, um, we're trying to be a little more proactive, we, Debbie Murray and I have talked about, and Brian, and I've talked about Steve, the first fire, is about the parking space, so I've issued out, I don't know, based, and on the training, you have any questions?
So, all weekend, I, I turned the ball, I talked to a cap agreement on, on Friday, when I came out from a four day, and I turned up the volume over the weekend of, of parking where we have signs. I think I marked probably most than 30 vehicles, saying, and I was giving them the, the first, hey, we're gonna be here, and we're like, we need you to move your stuff. So I actually took down plates, called residents, went knocked on doors, and said, hey, so see the, see the choke point or anything for the fire truck, we really appreciate if you can move it, everybody was really good about it. A lot of vehicles on the weekend, so, I just got a, uh, a printout from the chief about, uh, measurements that they need for emergency vehicles, and the footprint that they leave, and the turning radiuses and stuff like that. So we're, as an office, we're, we're coming up with a plan to send out a communication between our office and the, the contractor directly, like with their main office, start a dialogue with them, so that way they are educating their guys, uh, hey, let's be smart about parking, so that way if somebody does get hurt, you know, we can get emergency response vehicles in there without having to be move a bunch of vehicles. I got a list of about 40 contractors so far, and the list just grows every day as I see trucks stop working, and I'm, I'm, I've been working on that all weekend, and it's not good anywhere.
Okay, sounds good. Yep.
And this will help, now, I just got this from the chief today, of the, of the footprints, vehicles, now I can apply that to every code and say, okay, well, there it is. That means much, we, I'm take measure.
We've heard
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it'll get to be a little nuts here over the next couple of weeks with graduation parties and all that kinda stuff too, so.
Of course, just
Right, that's what I was gonna say, just.
The safety thing is.
Right.
On parking out, but I'm the safe.
Yeah.
They're sent to go for it, so if their signs are not
No, that's good.
Would you, uh, humor me for just a moment, I received a call from our local that has some concerns with a person in her neighborhood that has excessive amount of vehicles. I don't know what, all that, I don't know if there's a way to quantify that, but my understanding is there's five or six in the driveway, and then an additional four or five out on the street. And it doesn't say no parking on the street, and, um, these vehicles don't move, I guess, very well, and it creates a hazard for people across the street trying to back out, because they feel like they don't have enough room, especially if they have a boat or a camper or something like that, right? And so she called, and, and she was very concerned, and she said, Sarah, what do we do about this, and I, I contacted Brenton, I contacted a few others, and I said, you know, what can we do? Is there a way to ask these people politely to? Is there a way to ask these people politely to park elsewhere or move their vehicles occasionally, so these people can get in and out? And I, I didn't really get a definitive answer, because there's really nothing, I'm told, that can be done for that particular situation, so I'm asking you, as, as law enforcement, is there something that?
I'm pretty sure I know what you're talking about, um.
Yep.
Unfortunately. As long as the vehicle they're driving on, available, they're eccentric. Down like a, that's, and don't have an engine. Something to do about it unless they're in a particular area. Sheriff's Office.
It, it's hard, because there's a, not only from a sheriff's office perspective, but a city perspective, and then also just a civil perspective, you know? Because I want these people to get along as neighbors, right? And at this point, they don't, because they're just angry, because they feel like they're locked in, they feel like they have no room, and they feel like they can't have people come over and park on the street if they have guests, relatives, you know, that type of thing. As a, as a council member, I feel like I'm very much caught in the middle here with, how do I appease this situation? And just shy of going to them and saying, hey, would you kindly be nice enough to maybe not have nine or ten vehicles here? You know, which is their right, I mean, they live there, for God's sake, so, so what is my recourse, I guess, is what I'm asking?
What you would have to do is, obviously Brenton's been working together with all the law firms to put together city ordinances.
Yes.
And so you're gonna have to look for something specific, and specifically sign for the vehicles on, on the street, what hours, and everything like that, really being as much like Craig said. Vehicles are broken down, and they're damaged, and that falls on their.
Correct.
If they're moving on day-to-day, parking them there, and they're parked illegally, as, as it is signed now, then there's nothing you can do about it, so. Might be something that you want to explore in those city ordinances to report.
I appreciate that recommendation, because that was something that was under consideration, but, you know, as partners here, we want to look to you for any type of options that maybe we haven't taken into consideration, and so thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I've done, I've probably thought more about parking, or you don't have.
Right.
Have researched a lot. Orbits of them. I often feel somewhere you kind of in the middle.
Right.
Obviously, I. I, I feel you, there were sometimes. The laws and both individuals unfortunate.
Right, and our, our ordinances have to be reasonable and fair for all, right?
They have to, they have to fall in line with.
Venture.
Right.
Or, or some things you've been.
Good, well, I think we have some news upcoming on some of that later in this meeting, so we'll talk through some of that.
Last option, we could, you know, try to, so that legislative level. Change century code off statutes. Got a lot of new legislation to try to put. That should surprise us.
Good.
Anything else for me or Murray?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks guys.
Yeah, and it's been really good, um, part, I haven't seen a lot of people.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Just mentioned that ordinances, so they're talking about, uh, Sheriff John here, Deputy's, some of his staff, Chris and I talked about changes that we made. Drafted, and it's got Sheriff John here, his staff reviewed it. Quite elaborate in the area that we're going to try and check also, and then also we're looking at, um, with that thing aside, which sure that there's some logic, like engineering logic behind, if you put a no parking zone, you say, uh, all side street, one side or the other, there's some asset behind it, because otherwise there's, you just pick a spot, and we want to make sure that, okay, if we say no parking on this one side or both sides, it's because they can't handle that issue, you know, parking.
I know I've seen, like West Fargo has a, is it a seventy-two hour? What is ours?
I believe, well, ours is just about, we say, all night.
No, all night.
Can you shoot at the time once and send someone to be there?
To clock it, yep. Hey guys, I don't mean to interrupt here, but I know Jesse's on the clock here, so let's let him do his spiel, and then we can, uh, discuss this afterwards.
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right, that's me here, and of the council, thanks for giving me just a few minutes of your time to see these go over, kind of, a whole review of our, of our sheriff's office, and, um, some things that might be pertinent to, to questions you've asked in the past as far as additional law enforcement services and things like that, so. Um, currently, and most, most of you probably know this, but Cass County encompasses one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square miles, uh, which is twenty-seven cities, so a number of cities within, within Cass County, a large square mileage area that was responsible for, for, and taking public safety. Uh, this is our yearly budgets on twenty nineteen, um, nineteen million, twenty twenty, twenty million, twenty twenty-one, twenty. Pretty proud of these three right here, we were able to keep the, uh, in my first three years here, um. Able to keep our budget pretty, pretty leveled, but then as you see in twenty twenty-two, it went up four million amounts attributed to the new intake that we're putting on to the jail right now. So we're currently adding an intake addition onto the jail, and, um, this doesn't give us a lot of extra cells right now, but it's gonna hopefully, when it's done, speed up the process, we'll see officers from people, you know, drop them off, so we can get the back on the. The other thing that I thought was a concern, so then, you shouldn't have any detox, as you've probably heard of talking before. It's a bar intake area, for tox, also for suicidal, watch, mental health issue. Individuals that are intoxicated, have suicide deviations, mental health issues, those individuals can't be held cell. So, a lot of our cells in the intake area are single, single cell areas, and so that should hopefully help with that. Uh, most people don't know this, but we have, uh, currently now, um, two hundred and forty employee positions, third from the left. Usually when I ask how big our, ask people how big they think our agency is, it's usually less than two or sixteen. Uh, we are actually the largest law enforcement agency in the state, so, okay? There's a little bit of a breakdown, take or take approximately here and there, of what our, what our office looks like in whole. So we currently have thirty patrol deputies, that includes our school resource deputies, um, seven investigators, eight civil and law ones, deputies that just go up to sort of civil processing points, mostly civil process. Uh, court security, we're, we're, um, tasked with maintaining security at the courthouse, and all court rooms, trials and things like that. So we've got eighteen people there, support services, we've got a sheriff's reserve, um, unit, which is broken up with ten full-time licensed officers, and then fifteen that are reserve officers, spawning a, an appointment for me. Um, and then in the jail, approximately a hundred and twenty-four employees, uh, which brings us to that two hundred and forty. So one of our biggest challenges right now, Cass County Sheriff's Office, is personnel shortages. That stops us with our office, it's combined right now with a lot of law enforcement, it's just a shortage nation line of people. So, it's been a problem over the last several years. So, for example, typically get about twelve people applying at a time, and we'll, our process to, to bring people on, our onboarding process, and, uh, we used to get forty to fifty. So, if twelve people applying, usually after background processes and things like that, maybe about three. About our whole process, that's psychological. So, um, right now, we are currently now nineteen booked in jail. Twelve officers. So, um, we just recently hired a patrol officer from a different agency, and we'll be starting towards back end of May. Be down three, um, but it's been tough to, to get people on, right, and I think the last time that I checked, the PD was down a little over twenty, Sparkle PD's down somewhere between six and eight. So, um, as you guys know, this is, we're on top of here, we have four cities out of the county that currently contract for police services with the Cass County Sheriff's Office. City of Castleton has two, uh, full-time deputies, we just have two now, it's two now. For, for us, you guys have two, City of Kindred has one half-time deputy, and so what that means is that person, or they get paid for twenty hours of police services. Okay, um, with your two people that move out, you get approximately eighty hours a week of enforcement services. Um, then the City of Mapleton has a quarter-time deputy, so they get ten hours a week approximately. This is what, uh, is pretty, if we look at those numbers, that's our total calls for service over the last few years, and so twenty eighteen, we had eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five, twenty nineteen, seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty, twenty twenty, twenty-two thousand six seventeen, and twenty twenty-one, that jumped all the way up to thirty thousand on nine thirty-six. So calls for service is going to be, you know, someone calls dispatch and reports something, uh, that could be a calls for service, a traffic stop, then initiated calls for service, um, our guys stopping out. Once you like Craig and Jake do at night, and check on businesses, they may call that out, say that they're doing a business check, where they're just making sure that the business owner locked their establishment. Um, bar check, any of those things will generate a calls for service, okay, so we've gone up quite a bit. And then, again, this is for the whole county, so this isn't just Morris, okay, this is the whole, overall county. Uh, we currently have school resource deputies, so we have, um, schools only, that currently contract with the sheriff's office to have a deputy in their school. So Maple Valley right now has, um, it's actually a different person, Sasha Cook is a, he a deputy out there right now. Maple Valley's own tower city, Northern Cass School, Central Cass, and Kindred, and then also, um, Mapleton, so the deputy that's in Kindred spends time in Kindred, twenty hours a week, and then goes to Mapleton's, and so. And that's a cost share with the school, so for, for residents in here, um, in general, without getting down to the pennies. You guys contracting with our office down in Morris for police services, generally how that works is the city pays for the salary benefits for that person, and the county is a cost share, the county pays for these, but it's actually a win-win for everyone, right? Because the city of Morris is getting a deal, I have in town, there's an off-aid for everything, there's equipment, it's real expensive. And then the county's getting a deal, because they're splitting that cost, and we're getting an extra deputy down in the city, so it's kind of a win-win for everything, everyone. Does anyone want to take a guess on approximately how much it costs to open a patrol vehicle right now?
Three.
Right around, okay?
More, hundred and fifty.
So about sixty-five thousand, in between, it depends on the vehicle that we're getting and stuff, but sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand is approximate. You know, if it's a K nine vehicle, it's gonna be a little bit more, um. One of the most expensive things in there is the computer system that we have, that generates our calls for service, that these guys have back here. Players that books into their bar, that's how they can run people, and they call them over to check for warrants, that's how they get their calls for service, individuals like that. Uh, Cass County Jail, so as, as, uh, the sheriff's office, or the sheriff, responsible for overseeing the jail, so if the City of Harville arrests someone, the City of West Harville arrests someone, our guy has the HPs, Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and the beds, they all bring to Cass County Jail. That's what they're doing, okay? Our mass capacity is three hundred and forty-eight. Um, our high count is, in two thousand eighteen was three oh two, high count in twenty nineteen, three twenty-three, and three nineteen in twenty twenty. So we've been kind of running in that three, three hundred mark to three twenty, and then you can see our total bookings, nine thousand, people booked in that year, nine thousand seven hundred, three thousand one hundred, six thousand nine hundred, and one long take, guess some why that one's lower? COVID. And we have, COVID was at its highest, not everyone that was being arrested was being brought to jail, some people were being cited and released alongside the load. If, as long as they didn't have a by them to disagree, um, or they weren't a public safety risk. So, Craig stops someone, and there's another suspension, that's the only charge they have, they have a little trouble report, he keeps issuing the citation alongside the load, giving a port date. Don't pay, you need to go back to go report for this on this date, I'm not gonna take. Typically, we would take that person to jail. What do you think happened during that time? Do you think all those people went to jail, that'll be seconded and released? What do you guys think? No. Now we got all these outstanding warrants, because people didn't go report, take care of their stuff, so. I guess it is what it is, but we've got a number of people. Um, the only real other thing I would tell you about this is right now, we're in a study to increase the capacity of the Cass County Jail. Because although it says we have three hundred and forty-eight beds, when we get to three twenty, that's not good. Because I got, I need to leave a little bit of a pushing into jail, in case we have a mass arrest situation, like a civil unrest situation, like we had downtown Harville, they're making mass arrests. I gotta have a push in there, bring people there, so when we get to three twenty or more, I start sending people to other jurisdictions and housing them there. That's not good, because that's, that's eighty-five dollars a day, and it's going up to over a hundred, um, next year. And then, everyone that's in our jails pre-trial, so they still have court, they're going back and forth to court, because they're not sentenced, most of them. So I have to send a transport team out to go grab them, now whatever jurisdiction they want, bring them back to court, and run them back to that jail, and then come back. That's a lot of overtime cost. Um, so right now, there's be, a study being done about the capacity, capacity that we have at the jail, because the jail was built in two thousand and two. Added on in like two thousand and twelve, I believe, and, um, that's been added on since then. As everyone knows, the population is growing, and we need to grow with that, so, um, the reason that the study is being done right now, and why I'm pushing to expand on to that, is because there's extra money available right now from the CARES fund and the ARPA dollars. I would rather tap into that than have to ask people to raise taxes to help us pay for that, right? All in all, ARPA funds, CARES funds, those are all taxpaying dollars, but they're spread out throughout the whole United States. We have to raise taxes here, just to build the jail, that's, you know, we'll have to do that, so, pushing really hard right now to get that added on it. Um, it looks like that's probably gonna happen, so. These are just some pictures from the inside of the jail. It looks like you've never seen it in there, hopefully it all has, be kind of scared if everyone raises their hands, it's a different thing for. Um, so, okay, then just real quick, um, so we can kind of speed this up here. Crimes against persons, our biggest crimes against persons are always gonna be assaults, it's gonna be domestic, simple assaults, that type of thing. Uh, we did have two murders in two thousand and twenty, and one murder in two thousand and twenty-one, one of those was over here at Figgers. Um, that you guys probably know about, uh, the other two were both in Castle Town. That's a little strange for Cass County, we don't, we have that, however, I don't want anyone to panic or worry about it, it was all isolated events of, um, situations where everyone knew everyone. It wasn't grand, not survival. Okay, so all in all, we still live in a very safe county. Uh, crimes against property, we're always gonna have burglaries, are gonna be one of our higher ones, vandalism's, starting to get more identity thefts, those are bad, those are hard to solve, we usually don't get those solved, because identity theft usually happens over state lines, and we don't have jurisdiction outside of Cass County. So then we have to rely on other agencies to help us out, and if the victim isn't from their area, they're not gonna put that person, that case on top priority. Just some of our drug offenses, our drug, drug arrests here. The arrest disorderly conduct, around other individuals. Mental health related calls for service right now, those are, they're high. As most of you have heard, you've got a lot of issues with that. Um. We have a U, um, US Marshal, I plan to be sure that we talk with task force, those help us serve the warrants. Some of our search and rescue vehicles that we have, um, everyone knows that we got airboats, we got two of those, we've got snowbills now, we have those for a little while, but we've got some newer ones, we've got some ETBs that we use for different things. Airboats, that's not, the state bought us the airboats, the trucks that we have. The, uh, the arrangement there was, because we were always flooding here, the state said, we'll buy you two airboats, then in agreement, you got the ability, and the state developed. That's our winter response vehicle that we've had, um, over the last couple of years here. With a plow on the front, and then two sleds on the back, so we'll go as far as we can with the plow, if we can't go any farther, we'll download the snowbills and use those to continue our calls for service, and the reason that we have that is because a couple of years ago, during a really bad storm, we had a domestic assault on town here, and it took us two hours to get to their house. Block in the bathroom, with the child, they were just trying to kick in the door, and we just. All the county road departments come and follow us, uh, a path there, and it took them a long time to get there, and we're like, no, that's unacceptable. Someone calls nine-one-one, we need to be able to get there and help people, so, uh, the county gave us this used truck from the road department, and we put a plow on it. Uh, most people don't know, but we have a motorcycle, a couple of our leads that we use in the summer time for traffic enforcement, so you may see that down here a little bit this summer, that can help with some traffic enforcement. Um, these are some of the programs that we currently have, um, in place, crime prevention programs. Um, these are some of the programs that we currently have um in place, crime prevention programs. So though. Craig was talking earlier, if you get people to sign on to the neighbors app, because. Got a lot of information about vehicles driving around that look suspicious, so. Get you guys more information about that. We recently added a uh, crime analyst position at our agency, so we're just in the beginning phases of that one. Craig, you're getting the yearly report next time and see a lot of what that person can do. It's, it's pretty good. Um, and what it, what it does is it gives us um, or allows us to follow an idea called intelligence-led policing. Um, that helps us better utilize our resources. So that person can look at the reports that come into the office every day, they can diagram them out, graph them out. And we know where a lot of the burglaries are hap, when they're happening, the times they're happening, and then we can concentrate our resources in that area during most times. So that helps us um use our resources better. Um, it's just another graph that that person could put together, the calls for service. There's some of the plots where a lot of stuff where burglaries were happening in twenty twenty-one, those three circles. Three in this area, seven in this area, a lot along the uh, river corridor there in the. I from nine, so that helps us concentrate resources in those areas to try to catch those individuals. Um, then most recently, you probably saw that we um, Ed was our last K nine, he passed away July sixth, twenty twenty-one. After thirteen years, had a really big career. Um, we have another dog seen on, she retired in twenty twenty. Um, this was a partnership with Shields, they, they spent fourteen thousand five hundred and we were able to purchase quota. The money going here from Shields. You guys probably saw that on the media, we worked with uh, with our community, we wanted to build partnerships with them. Um, we're, we're always looking to do that and um, relationships, and so uh, we have them help us name quota on that. Name his name. And uh, quota, when we got quota, quota was trained, so we had to send Glenn down and get trained, because Glenn wasn't trained. So quota had to train Glenn, and so they're, they're a TV now, and actually Jake is gonna be our next dog handler, he's recently been chosen, we'll get another dog. And we've had another person down by Kindred operated by that dog for us. So that's obviously saves taxpayer dollars because these dogs are fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. So. So we'll have two dogs soon, and we'll be down here. That'll be good for you guys. Does anyone have any questions for me? Right now, yes?
How are you feeling with the price of gas?
I'll figure it out, that's an excellent question. Yeah. So every year when we budget or do our yearly budget, we have line items in a budget, and we have to kind of somewhat. Be telepathic or pick what the, what the gas prices are gonna go to, and so we had an inclination that they were gonna probably go pretty high, so we budgeted for four dollars a gallon. Right now, we're late there. So our line item is good, but if gas keeps going up, we're gonna have to adjust how we're doing some control, so. Go back to the insurance, see if they can give us one way or about two, one or two. So we'll see if we can maybe pull from another line item, now we're not. That's a good question, that's hard to predict.
Let me see, just to touch on that, I got uh, I have the fire chief and I got approval. I said, hold on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Craig. So we do also have bike control. Um, and we're gonna try to implement that down, that down here, and like Craig said, he's one of our bike guys. That will be a very good thing, that allows us to do a lot of extra things. It's burglaries grabbing. If we can use our intelligence-led policing, graph out, and so the policing grabbing. Craig can spend time in those areas on flight, they can't see him coming, they can't hear him coming. Those areas. So it, you know, it's, it's a good thing, we, we try to implement a lot of different uh, crime prevention strategies. Mostly if we wanna try to be proactive, because we have to always. Houses must use more resources to be proactive and deter things, that's always a benefit of that one, but yeah, that's true. Okay, anyone else have anything, wait? I got, I do have the pool, because I got another thing.
Yep. Appreciate the presentation, it was good.
I know that you just asked about um, additional potential police services in the future. Um, we gotta get fully staffed right now, right? Because I gotta provide public safety to the whole county. Hopefully that happens. Brenton and I have been in a lot of discussions, I really appreciate working with Brenton. Um, he's always been good, and um, the mayor as well. They've both been really good, you know, I call him up. Down conversation, and I'll. Well, Craig and Jake speak with Brenton on the regular basis, and you know what, sometimes he's a little frustrated with stuff, and that's okay. Because people call and stuff, right? But the main thing is, is that we can all just sit down and talk about it, try to come up with a solution, and see what works best. So um, we appreciate that partnership and. Try to bury things out together and do this best for you.
Appreciate you coming down here and giving us that presentation. I know you've gotta go.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, with that, Dylan, you've been waiting patiently to talk about this special assessment policy.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I was asked to come down and give a update on. Down for.
A long time.
Yeah. Over a year now, I know. Helped me with a lot of the residents.
I would say it's been eighteen months, I think.
Um, a lot of the group here has been involved in developing this, this policy. Good coming. Um, what I just wanted to do tonight was just kind of run through the policy. Um, and hit on some of the high points. Yes. Sure, just kind of running the screen, but I'm just gonna. Run through some important stuff. I guess I wanted to start with kind of the intent of the policy in general was create something that is. The special assessment. Special assessments. Guys are doing here. This document, regardless of what's in it, some documents are gonna be a roadmap. Assessments. I think what we did here in this policy also hit on a lot of the needs. Um, one of the major concerns we heard at the initial house that we had was just communication transparency. Try to use that as possible policy. Also that. First section of policy, and just talks about the general purpose of the policy, it's got all the definitions there. Documents. Um, we start getting into. Section two is kind of where we start getting into. Guess of, of the policy. Um, kind of the first section we talk about here is we highlight. Policy. Guys can, like you're here enough. But what we did is we took the state's requirements, we added on to that. So the, as you can see on the screen here, there's all the steps that the state has listed out. I've actually made a nice little public chart that's included in the appendix. Summarized, see. Where we're at. The section we're showing right there is kind of this expanded procedure, this is where we add on the state's. Requirements, I guess, something that's beneficial to the city. Maybe we'll kind of step through this process here, just to give you guys. Sample of how you guys are levying special assessments in the future. Uh, so step one is the city creates a special assessment. City. Support the project. Three of who it is benefiting from this, this project in current boundary. Step two of the city, perhaps the city engineer, Jim. Ride you guys with uh. Engineering, preliminary engineering for kind of lays groundwork. Possible feasibility of the project and possibility of the assumption of the project. Um, the next step is actually, step three, this actually has new stuff that the city is implementing. This entire process, and I would say this is probably the most important step that was added to the entire process. What this does is at the beginning of the project. Where anything's actually levying before construction starts, and actually before the engineer even develops official plans and specs. City, uh, where's the property owners that are within this. Improvement district, that there is an upcoming project, or even alerted of your. I give them all very information. So invited to a. The informal project meeting. So that's step four. These, these two steps at the beginning are very important, because now residents are invited to a meeting at the beginning of the project where they can discuss. Project, learn more about it. Transparency against cities and cities, what residents know is happening. It also gives the residents a chance to voice their opinions on the project, where it's actually designed, bid, constructed. Uh, so we, we feel this is a very key step. Getting residents all very early on in the process. From here on out, the steps kind of follow the state's steps where after. They have informal project meeting. He has, I guess, options to support the project or to, and to go back and tweak the preliminary engineer. Once that preliminary engineering report is, is tweaked, city council will approve that. PR, so we call it. The main here reports a little bit of a loophole, that is approved. After this, the PR approved, city council passes a resolution to break the cesspit for the project. That is also published in the city's newspaper, third notification period. By the project is coming. Um. And that also allows for official protests to be filed against the project once that is notified. There are no protests, the city council and project director and the city engineer, their plan and specs. The engineer of those plans and specs. City council then approve those plans and specs, start to develop the bid. Home builder is selected, project is constructed. And after the project is constructed, that's where the special assessment commission. They start the process of putting together assessments for each process based on the annual. Once the commission has all these numbers, they then. Out another set of letters. And I should verify that, it's not this, it's not necessarily new step, but we are setting it up so that a letter will be sent out to the residents that are gonna get. Get a letter with your assessment amount. By the objection hearing. A statute for this hearing where residents are allowed to come in. Objection hearing is held. Depending on public comment, mission made table decision, not by or confirmed. Once that is confirmed by the special assessment commission, the note. Confirmation of assessments is fully favored. Then you're allowed. Then you are, are allowed to. File written deals with this. Depending on the public comment, this is then when the city comes in and makes the final decision. The assessments, they. That's, I guess, the general process, but again, the most important stuff is that. You guys will be getting a letter if you're in a room. Or in. District, any. Assessments. And that's one of the biggest comments we heard from residents of state. Assessments, whether or not that's actually true. We're not turning that, but this will be. This just explains how it. Difference between. This really isn't any different than Jim and the engineers have been. It's just another area. Some transparency. Of this policy. We go through this. That offers the wall. And it's just, again, the roadmap for the special assessment. Process. Listen to a little more about. Um, we can determine. Different types of projects. Orders of a project versus. So this. Policy here. Chapter four talks about the benefit of determination. This is actually pretty much identical to what has been happening here in Horace. Now, again, it was set in, in a policy, we don't. Basically figure out all. Levying assessment. At the end of this section, is, is some new stuff in the section four point two, we have some special considerations. Depending on the, the type of assessment method that is used. Typically, if you go to the next page or. Get into each section. So something that we added to this, this policy is the. Hot look, hot equivalent factor. What this does. Size lots that are. That you have a anger lot by your. That has a minimum lot size of acres. This. Could potentially subdivide. Set up so that we can assess that, that their actual. Potential. Basically point kind of large, someone buys a large anger lot and then. Size of. They could subdivide that into five lots. They could get it passed upon. Special assessments. Take the lot, just. Guess to kind of level the playing field and set an equal, equal wall. That's connected, those large lots that could get subdivided further down. Next section is about use factoring, and this is another factor that's used generally for those, those parcels that are non-residential. For instance, commercial property. Those, those commercial properties are getting charged their, their share on the screen. One of the new things we need to start at the end is the option for agricultural determiner. It's agricultural parcel. Um, can you be in an agricultural property, there's special assessment difference on that property for sure. And then the end is a appendix of the blow chart of that process that went through the beginning. Standard central process. Next one is. Advanced one that were, those green boxes are the steps, see, Horace, something to add. Patient residents. This is just the, this diagram showing the different types of lots, standard lots, first curb lots, first corner lots. You can have a template of letters that. Sent out, you know, for steps. These, consistent type letter, these still may be a little bit of work in progress based on what the city wants to see on these. But the goal is to have standard letters. Steps. And at the end, there's just some calculations if you're not. Diet on how these, some use factors. Uh, some engineering manuals and, and just. And last is a sample of all those of the lot factors, factors are. That was pretty quick, but that is a rundown of what we've been working on over the past year, what kind of time went into developing. Certain sections in here, specifically the, the different factory areas. I just spent a lot of time talking about some other options. There was, there's many different options we pulled, we had some different states that we could use, and we vetted and. And pros and cons. and gross and tons of so. Spent a lot of time betting everything that was policy. Thanks to kind of thing wrapped up to a point last week, but yeah, it's one of the all updated. As, as far as I'm aware, we're pretty close to the end, if not at the end of the policy development. Some point near duty date.
Yeah, think about the only thing we have left is just to clarify some of that verbiage in the letter. The rest of it's pretty much done.
So staff will be working with Santa to get, get formatted a little bit more. Create a, um, clarification letter. Our expectations back to council of the next season June sixth, traction on it. I'd make sure that also you get opportunity to see this, adjust it, and look at it again. And maybe as interaction next week. That way they say we want you to be able to
Um, how are you guys feeling about it, Martin and Al? Are you guys feeling pretty good with how it's laying out?
When did we? Yeah, I was like, yes. Um. Glad the communication piece. There's a reason why you know. He's a lot of this. It's a special assessment committee. Attitude. This thing will it seems like there must
I was, I was particularly interested in, in the issue that you raised, that there is section four point two. About the large lots, how they could be assessed. And I was just wondering whether or not, and you said, it said there was something about ag land. It was a little bit deeper into, into your presentation. I was wondering if there's any carryover between those two, number one. Number two, I was wondering if there was any consideration given to the off, the proposal that Travis will, will keep. I mean, for friends coming in, they have presented in terms of what grading, if you will, or sort of levying a, a certain amount of, of benefit, if you will. Uh, A, B, C, D, and C, F, whatever.
Yeah, so I guess of, um, the first one you're talking about, the use factoring for agricultural land. Um, that is, that takes place. We're doing a regional assessment for a chunk of land that is what, what, how that works. You look at the future of any use for that chunk of agricultural land. Say it's firming that in the future, that's going to be residential land. The city has some futures going now, so they know right now, whatever chunk of land will be used. That we've got a chunk of land that's agricultural. Future can be residential. We, we, that's where it actually is the most important, if we want these agricultural properties that eventually will be seen that a lot of them will turn residential, commercial at some point. Be assessed right now, barely infrastructure that will be a chunk of agricultural land. Always lots. Get a use factor of fifty. Be placed in that suburban on residents outside of that. I think there is one piece. I commit no wrong, but we did talk about development driver. And I don't believe I see anything that well, great lakes is a front. Developments put in a place where there's real city services. That's all city services all the way from area all the way down there. And everybody else ends up paying for it. Right, those services need to be up down there. We talked, we talked about that, we think development drivers a lot in this. And it wasn't really the right place to put a special assessment policy. This, this policy is just used for helping with levy a special assessment. That's more so on, on your guys' planning side. More impractical planning, make sure not that property models like in years. Without that being the policy, we, we love to school. That's actually development driver. Add it through quality. Yeah. It's not, as long as we have the flexibility to use that. Especially so terms, terms that's fit or appropriate. I, I will pay with it, but be great if it wasn't listed in here, but Right, I'm not sure there's something to actually list in this. That would help. Do this more does it does get um, that is, uh, my, our city's services. Use policy is best, successful stocks. It's holding some effect, I mean, that it's just some factoring. It is, yes, absolutely.
I, I appreciate the fact that but very helpful. I maintain my own position.
Al, you're not the only one, man.
Me too.
Okay, anything else for Dylan on this one? Any other questions, concerns? Like I said, it's been a long haul. It's been eighteen months since we started this thing. And I know we went down a couple of rabbit holes and that just turned out, wasn't going to work. For one thing, I think one of them was illegal in the state of North Dakota. You know, so it's like, okay, ditch that, but it's honest to come up with something that's fair. And we've explored other options too, and I think some of that got incorporated here too, just the thought process, so.
Yeah.
We said it's, it was a long process, but I think we landed on something now that'll help special assessment committee going forward. Because it'll all be written down, everybody's going to be on the same page, and that's something we didn't have before.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lending and stuff. Like Martin was saying, they would still have a latitude. Off with it, of having a policy in place.
Correct.
Hold that views and they can focus their efforts on, on detail rather than focusing their efforts on
Yeah. I, I'm really looking forward to having some uniformity when it comes to sending out letters and we know that there's going to be a letter going out and we know that there's going to be communication because we've just had too many people coming in here saying we didn't know. So, um.
Heard that.
Yeah.
Whether or not or don't
Mm-hmm.
Letters and
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything that would be assessed.
Alright.
Anything else, guys? Okay, other than, okay, thanks Dylan, appreciate it.
We got one more.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Kind of a follow. I don't know, I really liked all this part. City council, it's you know, would be steps that came through. That all that. Um, I guess I, I was wondering third, then they'll hit the website and I think it should be sooner than later. Yes, so how we have it set up. Always have it set up in here, that website to be set up. I mean, the city has a special assessment. Be, and he set up for each, that, that, that third step for the on that webpage. If we do have some projects right now, that would be I guess that's just
We have projects that are being added. It's now compared to what a month ago. Probably the city girl, there's more projects on there. That's available. Add more content and more projects on there. Two months. Then we'll go back to objects there. We have the big one, Wall Avenue, which is big ones. Type over here. That's, we have quite a bit of information on there for all. And we're also going to staff level. Relate some of that.
Written to, I have enough to beat a horse here, but, uh, the Wall Avenue project, Jim had some great maps. Let me have you open house here with the assessments for a lot. And I haven't seen that on the website unless that's been added recently.
I, I was just looking for it today and they're not, so I have to talk with the staff. They are implementing their engineering report. Through the last pages of it, however, that would spend, you know.
Right, go.
Okay. Dylan, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to the Wall Avenue Street Improvement bit. And who wants to start that one, Jim, or? Okay, go for it.
Answer your question was very helpful. There is a status summary, sort of in reference to the two projects. Haven't broken down here based on task. Why do you have to ask funny, you have land acquisition. Station. Identified as to who think that that is by title action, which I is still to it. That's the only thing we're working on. Crazel or if Don Crazel is, Crazel Consulting is working on a, on both sides, he has six that is agreement. Relocation, relocation. Relocation. Due to power poles. On the wall. Again.
Okay.
There has been some that permitting sovereign lands permit was, after we had gotten some of the eight initial surveillance there was there. Says it was a block of lots. But they were that is because so as far as preliminary funds are concerned, they, they decided they've been spent. And, uh, public works has a for sure comments. Bring those comments. Scheduled on that June sixth. We're opening early on June thirty. Five fifth. West addition, west side being a little bit due to some other acquisition. And that is identified as they're not through some of that. East side is much more, west side, but land is still here as far as getting them constructed. Lost a month as far as the weather is concerned right now. Putting these project schedules together, usually there's a very expensive early in the year. So there's some supply chain issues and it's not necessarily the shelves and piping and that type of stuff. They're not federal jobs, so they're all, they're under, they're not, probably domestic. Air and steel, precast concrete. Usually we have two contractors, two suppliers, a bit of them, impact and era. Based on impact and soda, ones based on, on top of the, anything worth capital. On suppliers and and when I talked to a contractor this morning, seems like they're tying their bids as far as structures and there has been talk of some precasters in South Dakota putting online, but talking it up here.
Mm-hmm.
To be
Expensive.
Channel, so we're gonna push on, we're pushing on quickly as possible. Get it out, get a bid, the numbers, get the exact numbers, see how
What, uh, like, what does it look like if the property owner, you said in the west portion?
Want to indicate on the west side that it's just
So that's for the easement, right?
So then what happens? Like, what if we're like waiting just for that?
The city will likely have to implement, they will proceed wire necessary.
So we could be at a standstill because of that? So, no?
City needs to use quickly.
Okay.
But so with that appraisal that we're waiting on, the city's actually giving a value for easements and deed title. Goal is to try to purchase all of the property and deed. But the property owners will have the option to just engage in, or have the city acquire engagement. That's the design.
Okay.
Most of them would want to sell.
Yeah.
Most of them would want to sell versus easement. Because easement, they could still have properties. It's like bulk for taxes.
Yeah.
If you sell it, your lot gets reduced.
Right.
I guess.
Right, it makes more sense to just
But
do that, but
Like that, then go through the process and
But then they still pay for that.
Costs get settled.
Okay.
Jim, how long of a project is the east side?
Uh, so there's not, ground aside, we saw standards who were in it, it's three apps, it's out in two thousand seventeen. Water main was put in eighteen. Just have to put storm sewer in along there, then pave it. Close down completely. Probably.
It's It's doable with this July.
The fact that there's a lot of ground in the underground crews we've got. This next week will talk about the updates. Like state middle, middle part. Tops. This one's not have much. Week is ours.
And do you have any, I mean, do you feel like confident that we can pull it off or are you concerned?
I'm on the fence now.
Yeah. That's sad.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But we'll have to keep moving forward, like we can try and get this thing done. We want to get some bids in from both sides. Let's see what we get, what we're dealing with here. So. Oh, yeah, Al, go ahead.
Just a point clarification. Jim, did, did you say that, uh, the sixth of July was when you're aiming to, uh, forfeit? Uh, yes, forfeit or something like that? Yeah, yeah, so no, no dirt, but we turn before that, no.
Okay. Any other questions, guys, on this one? So, yeah, Jim, thanks for the update on that, I appreciate it. So, all right, let's go on to ten then.
Excellent. Mars, this is sort of the district's point seven. This is state, state second edition. The issue consists of thirty-three residences, including there's wood holes on the area of Deer Creek Parkway and uh, this is the big Deer Creek Parkway, south of it in East, down in row seventeen. This is a, like I said, family. Three units. Our super storms. Hunter sewer mains and services, water main and services. Fire hydrants, storm sewer lateral catch base and answer. Patient of water inflection. It was under five blocks, charity, down seating. Deer Creek Parkway from section of. On the estimated project cost for this.
Are you filming a laugh? Andy's.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that?
What you just mentioned, that cost was per, for the twin homes.
Yeah, it's for, it's for.
Two.
Two households.
For one hundred and three.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you.
That's the location. So in the red up there is. Deer Creek Estates, position, and then in the bottom of Deer. Both of which have been planted.
Jim, are they gonna do something with that road too? The, the uh, parkway?
Yeah, that gets taken over, section two.
Yep, okay, that's just, that was still in play, I'm just making sure. Okay. Have they got any questions on this one?
It's not larger lot two on the second edition, is that a park? Lot three, two and three?
The park, park board determined that since approximately Deer Creek Park, Deer Creek Park, this up the road.
Yeah. So, did they have a plan for those larger lots?
There, there's something like it. You go to the. Which twelve, yeah.
Yeah, just those two taller ones, lot two and three.
Which is lot two is that one that's got highlighted, that's gonna get pawned. And then to the left, to the left of that lot one, that's gonna be. Yes. Commercial. Some point.
Then what about that lot three that's next to the pond lot?
Lot three, that's where they have the. So there's four, four on both sides. There's that forty foot shared access and utilities and there's. Or on each side.
Got you.
Okay, any other questions? Concerns? Okay, Jim, what you're looking for here is a resolution approving preliminary engineering report, and then a resolution to direct engineer prepare detailed plan and specs, right? Okay, somebody wanna?
That's forever together.
We'll, we'll do them separate, just because I know it makes Lucas's life easier.
Motion to approve the resolution of uh, approving preliminary engineering part.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Okay, I will.
Can Naomi does a second? Alright, so Chelsea's made a motion, Naomi did a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. Go on to the second one. Resolution directing the engineer prepared detailed plans and specs.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Sarah made a motion, Naomi did a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry, motion carries. Go on to number eleven.
Right, if you were, contact, see if that's again, we're awarded water sewer storm, street improvement district under twenty-two, loss service seventh edition. Underground. We have the board ready to see construction here based on annual expenses. This project was designed by, reviewed by the city. We ran out of six, destruction improvements. You can see this, um, annual expenses based on a. Based on twelve week construction schedule, this is a contract the last week. When he figured that his potential would be, so based on that, the other, the cash. Expenses, uh, contract we for not to exceed two hundred. And there is one that's identified in the plan as. Pretty much understand, it's just based a little different than us, as I know construction.
Still the same rate still?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I see.
So what are you looking for here, Jim, to approve it?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the construction engineering services agreement on water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty-two dash two, loss reverse seventh edition.
Yeah, Sarah made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Move along, well. Jimmy, you got that one?
Alright, so the first one we have here for senators who have. John Refrigeration Electric and State, electric, suppliers and contractor on the project. They are also being responsible for supplying control panel, control panel has components in the panel. Three time now that because of the pandemic and the current state we're in, so that being said, uh, do have a letter here from. From the refrigeration. When they started contacting their supplier. Job drawings and some, letters of the job, it was on the tenth second, twelfth of October, they sent an email to the Swedish controls and they were good to see the drawings. Just proceed on the fourth of November. The second said a written confirmation of earlier purchase order, February eighteenth, they contacted Swedish. Two, three recent relief drawings, drawings are approved by May ninth. And we returned those back last week, so they are requesting a thirty day time extension from the little panel. Well, site is ready, but the next bit of it is the general, has a separate contract, so we'll get for that next. General has requested a time extension too, obviously due, but this things and the depth of that location, there's. And they're just seeing white water when they. So, um, now here is a question, the extension, official completion of two long twenty-two to the new substantial position was thirteen twenty-two. Final pollution of August twenty-second, so we say that the potential to final pollution phase was conscious, so you have that project written down. First day, then you have those additional two weeks of. Initiative punch items, so we have a timeline of events that we went through in correspondence with the control system manufacturer, electric company. Contractors requesting we talk about that. The general contractor, Son Wettwell, has requested completion date extension to new, completion date of July eighteen. Those electrical will be installed, install installation. Could be a reason the time frame can get bigger. That's that.
So basically, so basically you're looking, they're looking at, the two separate people are looking at a time extension request here.
Yeah, so the way that project was bid, it was bid with three parts, parts to it, the second was the last decision, general construction and combined general, electric. So, a little bit on this one was general went to the CC Steel, I think it was, because of refrigeration. Last location you brought before you, it's on your own, yeah, they had a combined with this last. So that's why we have two of this one, they kind of just follow line with each other.
What is the total of the time extension?
The total is hard dollars or?
Time.
Okay, so two doors here. June. The two one was a. Basically two.
Two months.
Two months.
Been delayed one month here.
We want to make twice as kind of what. They're not sure if they do. One month. So. For breath.
They're not sure if one month's gonna be sufficient, they've been delayed one month, so they're asking for two.
So CCC last for, last for a month. They, John's asking for two. But well, everything is set, and they, they do their, if we look at the next one. Two on here. They are asking for. June to July. That's the one.
Okay, so that's their portion, and then John's has the secondary portion, so they're actually waiting. On these guys, which would explain the difference. Alright, that makes sense. I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're not getting too far out there, because we're gonna need that. Before fall rains hit.
Yep.
In October, and we all know they come in October, so.
They're pretty confident, though, they're gonna be able to get that electrical panel. Jim?
So the suppliers more confident.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did provide the requested. Cause that was like, they just didn't reach all right away. Here it is now, all. Free to launch, so they did provide.
Okay. Then I'm okay with this too. Alright, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I can. I'll make a motion to. Um, allow the time extension request, change order number one to John's Refrigeration and Electric.
Then you want to do the steel one too, or you want, you want?
Whatever you want.
Yeah, we can just do them together, or just basically do the time extension request.
The steel company too.
CC Steel.
CC Steel.
Okay, so Naomi made a motion, can I get a second? Sarah does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's everyone, alright. Brighton, you got the next one?
Hey, this one is referenced to on lot and south end of the first edition, the existing pond, no. Pond isn't there now. This pond lot, we're processing the lot split, starts to, the pond ownership is city. Remaining and they're on it. By the park district, or can't record it until you have specials paid off. Or current, paid off, current.
Oh.
Uh, so what we're doing is, we're working with Justin Grimson, Park District. Who. Breakout is approximately fifty percent, which is slightly. Fifty percent park district, a little fifty for city. Uh, that breakout. City's portion comes up to nineteen thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, yeah. Actually, I've abandoned. Thirty or thirty-eight, so I have to add that in, so. Just over nineteen thousand dollars. For the get to get current from the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one specials type in the property. Uh, that'd be if the council would waive the interest penalties tied to that lot. Asking for is council to waive interest penalties and authorize staff to. The very main balance of specials. Current. It's property, so we can process lots, but have the proper ownership, or the city owns the pond lot. Or Park District owns. From, you did retain. Third, going to the pond. Access. Park District. Sure we got a definite ask. City.
These pumps are all, they're all there today. You know? There's pumps out there today. I was just curious whose they were.
Orange one and.
That's what I, I wondered, and then there's one on the far side between.
I hadn't seen that. They just came out today.
Came out today.
Yeah. So the one is more in the box of this.
I was just curious who's messing around, because if we're paying for this and whatnot, I want to know who's screwing around out there. Okay. I drove down there to take a look at a couple things today, so good.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Guys, I'm, I'm okay with it. Need to do this, so. Somebody's got any questions?
So we're looking at waiving the interest in the penalty.
Interest in penalties and then have the city pay off the remaining balance of the specials. The park district paid off eighteen thousand seven sixty-four and eight four cents.
Yeah.
So the city would just pay off the remaining special assessment balance for twenty twenty-one.
So that it can be recorded correctly and done. I know that there's been some back and forth on that lot, and I've watched all the fun down there in the last couple months, so. I'll uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and waive that interest in penalty.
Second.
Sarah makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay.
And the city, please pay off the remaining balance. Get this recorded accurately.
Okay. Sarah made the motion, Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm really sorry.
Sure.
Sorry to, like, do that last minute, but I'm just thinking, like, is that normal to just do, to not pay penalties?
This is a lot split, and so, go ahead.
Sorry.
Property between. Backboard on this lot split.
So it's because there was a discrepancy?
Go to the cities, you know, you're between them.
Yeah.
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 Basically, we're, we're.
We're just waiving them.
People pay.
Us.
Penalty and interest on stuff, so.
Okay.
That was just. So.
And the reason for this is because one portion of the lot is owned by the park district, and another portion of the lot is owned by the city, it's. They actually encompass each other, correct? So, it's kind of a goofy deal how you have to split this and to record it properly.
Okay.
As the real estate that it is.
And because there was a discrepancy, they weren't current, is that?
Right.
Okay. Okay, sorry to.
No, it's good, it's good to ask questions, that's what we want.
Okay, so, be good then?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I'll look for, um, she already good to, okay, so Sarah did the motion, Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Lucas, you got the next one?
Yes, this, Mr. Mayor members of the council, this one's just second reading of the. Jake break ordinance, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's the last meeting you had. Marco was charging.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty dollars. Can't find it, so.
Nice.
They have it set by a resolution, I can't find the resolution.
Okay. Alright, we'll keep digging on that, that's not gonna be the showstopper here, I'm just curious if we can find out, but.
Yeah, it, it, their ordinance says that it's.
Resolution, okay. Which is where we'll probably wind up with this too, we'll do something for, via resolution.
Yeah, in this, well, in the city's traffic. Chapter.
Mm-hmm.
The penalties are provided within that chapter.
Okay.
And that's the same with century code.
Mm-hmm.
They're listed.
Does the sheriff's office have any basis for what typically. A fine would be for an infraction of a jake break or anything? You don't have anything, a guideline you go by?
Our purpose, yeah, of the standard century code.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't, we don't set it.
How quickly do we get signage up after approving it?
Before they would come. On their approval.
Okay.
We're gonna go out and take a selfie next to the sign once it gets put up.
Oh yeah, for, for, like that type of signage, it's gonna be at the entrance to the city.
Yeah, down here, right?
That's not so many.
No, no, it'll just be.
I want one. One up north and one on south, right?
It'd be, the main areas that we're looking at would be south, Carroll seventeen.
Yeah.
As you're coming north following the city.
Right.
I would have one south following Carroll seventeen, south of hundred, just as a diversion, obstruction.
Agreed.
And then the other one would be, or by the industrial park that area.
Right.
It's coming into the city on the hundredth, going westbound.
Excellent.
Now we should make sure we have one up north too, so that they understand when they come into the city, because there's gonna be construction all over the place up there, so.
But the main priorities were.
We're gonna want one on the north end too, like I said, the next couple years are gonna be pretty busy.
My, my only concern is gonna be. Coming in from the west or something.
And we'll see, if we start getting, if there's, gets to be issues like that, we'll probably have to put up more signage, I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to, we're gonna hit the high points right now that we know of. Um, but yeah.
Yeah.
Local streets. Lot easier for us to put them on, so let's. Here with first. Here first. And as we see the traffic coming out of your streets.
Yeah.
Because of local streets, that's.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions on this?
I'll make a motion to, um. Would accept, or what?
To approve the second.
Second reading?
Reading, yeah. Okay, so Naomi made a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
There is a second, alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll coordinate that up with the county, then we'll get that started. Alright, number fifteen, Brenton, you got that one?
Take me bringing this to you, uh, however across we have changed even balance. That's, we have this filter, update quote. This defense repair that I brought to council. Drive.
Yep.
And so now reevaluated it. Public Works, cuz they were able to look at some more since all snow has melted and everything. Uh, forty-two thousand, four twenty-eight, also through this one, thousand. Uh, since we got this quote, now Public Works has gone out. Do some repairs to get the fence at least functional and do some temporary repairs.
Yep.
We believe that will probably be, we believe will be under this forty-two thousand, four twenty-eight. However, since we have that date quote. At council approval, forty thousand. Forty-eight.
Yes.
So I hate to be gunning back to this.
Yeah, can I just add something about this fence? I hate to be like, uh, like, really, like, a. But, can we, I was just over there, and there is. Crap everywhere, like panels. All up and down that whole thing, is there any way we can get this, like, picked up at least, so it looks a little bit more? Presentable? Yeah, I don't mean to, like, make more work for them, but.
We don't wanna remove. Stuff.
Well, can we try to?
Salvageable, so that's all.
Yeah, we need to, like. Pile it up, it looks absolutely terrible with the amount of. Crap, I hate to call it crap, but it is just laying all over.
Okay, so you want a motion on that one, Brenton, to go to the, what the bid price was, do you wanna go over that? I mean, we shouldn't, I would say, we'll just. Yeah.
Make a motion. Before. Before we make a motion, are we withholding retained, um, amount? To ensure that this fix is done and done correctly?
It's just.
Typically on this one, it's such a small job that.
I, I have no issue. Whether you do or don't, but I'm gonna tell you this. We're not paying this info until this is done and done right, because we're not gonna deal with this again, so. Um, before this gets paid, I'd appreciate a phone call, and I wanna go down and do an inspection on this. With Public Works if necessary. That's all I ask, I'm not gonna require retained to be held, but we need to make sure that this is done and done right, this is gone on for part two.
Well, and normally they wouldn't build the whole thing until it was completed.
Typically, you don't pay until the work's done.
Typically, we don't.
That's the experience I've had personally.
Yeah, you, I would not ever. For construction work until.
It happens all the time.
Yeah, we, we have had contractors before. Tried to have us being built beforehand. Have them see them, see all remodel, and it's like, well, then we'll sit and tell.
I did, I did see that on our charter accounts too, so, okay, good.
Um, when were they planning on starting the project, fixing it?
I do not have an exact start date.
Okay.
We need to make sure we have the group.
I'm sure they have. Some materials they need to get to unless this is a stock taller, I don't know.
Yeah. I do know that they did, like I said, over staffs, officers are trying to. Fix up events, to ensure it's orderable, temporary repair, so folks can still have, like, functionality of events.
Yeah, I just, we need to clean it up, it's. Okay.
Alright, motion to approve the updated fence cost of forty-two, four twenty-eight.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
You want a second, or you want me to?
Don't matter.
I'll, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, um, Sarah does a second, I'll roll call this one, just to, cuz we're spending money again. Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay. It's passed. Alright, Brenton, you got sixteen?
Hey, next one here. Informational for council, uh, you've already approved. This, but I want to make sure you're aware of what. We need two vehicle replacements. Uh, one was budgeted in twenty-twenty-two budget, and other ones. Lots are coming for. Last year, we put plenty of equity reserve. Purchases, or just for a vehicle, two vehicles. Price now. SUVs and trucks. Trucks came in. Five, six grand higher. First, or. Buy and purchasing two Ford explorers with those vehicle purchases we need. So these were building inspections, truck that those inspections has right now, almost like they just go. Is that a mine trucks? Definitely. Inspections.
Yep. Still has four-wheel drive, is it? V-six or V-eight?
I don't know if it works spec, you know, I don't know if it's six or V-eight. Either one, you're stupid simple.
Enough horsepower to get over a curb?
Yes. I don't know if they made fix for it anymore.
I was wondering, I'm not sure if they.
I think it'd be a V-six.
Alright, any other questions on this one?
And this, we did use, uh. Press up with state contract pricing, that's why it took so long to get. Numbers, it's because. I have a lead to leave to the first album. State contract pricing, how they do. To near, it was like. Just a little thirty thousand. I can't say it's wrong experience by. Swerve down. Price, especially now with the price of vehicles.
I'm just curious, is there a reason we go with a Ford over a Chevy or a GMC or?
We're trying to be consistent. Same vehicle or same thing. Uh, I know our public works stat has been pretty stable towards Dodgers for, like, the pickups, for example. Uh, Fords, we're just trying not to have too much ride in your fleet, because then you start getting different. Different oils, for example.
That's what I'm curious about, what do you have the most of, so that we can name?
That's what we've been consistent with the Fords for.
Okay, can I ask a question? Why, like, you know, if I was buying myself a vehicle, I, like, would not, I can afford, like, a brand-new twenty-twenty-two? I'm just wondering, like, why we go with, like, the brand, brand-new when?
Cuz we get state contract pricing, we get the contract pricing. Pricing, pricing that we get for price of used vehicles. Can't get that type of vehicle.
So you're saying it could be more with a used vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I've done this personally.
Well, no, it's good for me to know, but it's also good for the residents to hear why we're buying a brand-new vehicle.
Trying to find a weekly score. Hundred thirty thousand. Trying to. Street or anything.
We'd be hard pressed for a twenty-twenty. If you get down here, so.
Okay.
That's why we do that. Also, your ability to need that's why it's everything. These vehicles, yeah, doesn't seem like they. Probably works vehicle or really inspections, for example. They'll, they'll be very little miles. Like with the vehicle, we have a fork. Bike time for them. Stop and go. And it's quite a bit weird here on vehicle.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, uh, it's a pricing that we get. Gets like these versus new.
So are you saying you don't get, like, a government deal if they're used? Oh. Okay, good to know.
And actually, very few dealerships even. Government racing, uh. Which is Burt's Falls, Minnesota. Uh, one other one, suppose that government racing. Big contract racing is up there for us.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on this one?
I don't think, we don't need to vote on.
That's what I was gonna say, we've already.
I wanna make sure you're aware.
Yep. Alright.
Cuz we, these were in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That we already.
One vehicle was in the budget for twenty-two, the other one we budgeted would be served. Side of the last year.
Okay.
Alright, Jim, let's go to seventeen.
What you have appointed tonight is memorandum of understanding for the. President Mamaw, new subdivision there. It's right now, maybe like state edition, based to itself, the mark sport. Real great this night. We were approached by prospective bidders on the project, looking. Our material area around. Contractors. Cost. It's a junk trucking. That's it, so contractors reached out to the city of Argo, knowing that the southwest bend pond is there, and a bunch of top file material. Probably should reach out and say. Oh yes. Contractors. Contractor, contractor will have a contract. For that work. That's the city of Argo. Far as this agreement. Basically being smart, provided. Trucking, maintaining, and what. But, one of the concerns we had during bidding is was that such a large. Just a little very building, it's controlling. Now. Options, it is close to South End Park. Plan would be to use the fifty-seventh street, which is their part. By, Astor Ames Construction.
So their main hall will be that. But they've speculated that. New vehicle. Why do they have your, that's need hollows for about fifty-seven streets, sixty. For we, that's what the city has. He said it's under. City has. Drop it. Or correct.
Right.
Right.
Russ, what you got?
It's before your time, but seventy-six avenue and full. By doing roll bar for the substation. And the road went from a two-lane to basically. The base was. Uh, so that everything arranged, we actually got a. It was destroyed by trucks doing a roll bar. Yeah, got it. You can, if you do that, if you do that on sixty-fourth. Sixty-fourth doesn't have the base to stand by. Trucks, we start running. Thousands of. Sixty-fourth.
Mm-hmm.
It will make the impact. In the lane, everything in that. You can't do no things about putting class five on. If the base stopped destroying.
So what do we do, is there another option?
I'm just concerned, cuz I know, I got called down to sixty-fourth. Counted thirteen trucks on day and had the distinct pleasure of actually flagging people down and saying, we're told to not go this way. You know, and, and I know I'm gonna get that call again. So.
There is no way of doing that.
This is hard, this is.
So what happened last time, Russ, into city and force that when the road started going bad, that they went after the contractors to work on that? Or do anything with it?
But once you, once you destroy the base. Class five doesn't fix it.
Right, no, I know, but I just didn't know what they, if they did any mitigation efforts upfront or not. But not the beginning.
But they didn't, like, stop the, hey, hold on here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Put something over the top. So there's no action for us here, it's just, um.
But what situation are you? Yeah. So, we, we, we're concerned, you could.
Russ, you're such a pessimist, come on.
No, he's real, he's a realist.
Yeah, no. Um. Okay.
I mean, I don't really have a comment, because I feel like it's a little bit out of, like, I don't know how you make that decision, so. Well, like, what is the other option? Can we have a line?
I mean, obviously the. Is that gonna?
Like, putting more, putting a couple inches of gravel down, like what Russ was saying, didn't work? It's gonna be a issue. I, I propose. Of course, to maintain the.
Would that do it, I mean, that's what kind of we're looking at here, if we're running, how, I don't know, how many trucks are gonna run on overload, which I agree with you, Russ. How, I don't know how many trucks are gonna run on overload, which I agree with you, Russ, I know that too. Um. You know, what kind of a substrate or what, what do we have to put down to at least try and maintain some integrity on that road? For the duration?
I mean.
That's the, I mean, that's. And you all got to cover the board. Literally. Mentoring all those roads. Before that, so that they don't just segregate. Under all that traffic. And I know it's not cheap, but if they're gonna allow this far. Is you consider shoring that up for the last. My two cents.
No, Jim, I'd say let's put that in there because we're gonna need to do something with that road because otherwise we're gonna spend more money rehabbing that thing. I know. This is the next step.
Cause I mean, that. This people, I don't think it's not aligned at all. They pay for it. If you're trying to cost.
But I think it'd be cheaper to do this than to have to rehab that whole road. When we're not ready for it.
There's a couple other roads in this town. If we wouldn't have done this one, we would have to go back and rebuild the base. So.
Okay, so getting back to this, though, we're okay with the memorandum of understanding, guys? Okay, then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept that.
I will make the motion to accept the memorandum of understanding.
Okay. And can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, Jim, we'll do that part one, and we'll work on part two then. Okay. Move on to eighteen here, Jim.
All right. We got her and some mulch. Um, this required by. Looking through the work. Actually, the hotness has been. The section. And one second time in twenty twenty eight and the twenty second. Contact to be. And we're going to do the why, the why second. Um, really, that's just because it's like a small. Cost. That was pretty first. Very small and. This is a pretty basic. So as you can see, there's. Here, there is. We'll do that. Go against. As you.
Why did that drop? I mean. There's a stall under there, you can see it. Uh, stall is cracking on the top from water. If you look. You can see that there's an area that's really low and then second. Picture shows the water, the third picture shows the stall and the cracking.
Jim, did they say when they were gonna go out and?
I'll depend on.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay. Questions, concerns?
Well.
Needs to get done, so. Okay, so we wanna make a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. Number one. Water state's. Water sewer storm, state of the district twenty seventeen, that's one.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a second? All right, so Sarah made a motion, Chelsea did a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Move on to nineteen.
All right, as we discussed in the last thing, also. Um. Your pump for the meter vault. Gas for. This is just a change order acknowledging that. Even though delivery. Alive, this is. It's a zero cost changing. Gotcha, can put in the meter of smoke. So there is a well documented. Old. Third time. Also, the thing is why. On the. So. We never. Uh, no, that was like the right to ever just to be. Final conclusion of. Remember, you do, you do, you do. Now. This is a little bit out there, I mean, it's required. See, this was everything. September. We want people to install. This is. Stop place.
It's got everything else.
Put it in there. So. One month on there. Probably.
So when are we gonna get one? When are we gonna get the water? So where we can get it?
Yeah, it was a supply issue, unfortunately.
I know, it's just really gonna.
Consider we started.
Yeah.
Third times.
Yep.
I just know like. Our areas getting kind of sick of that. Looking at water.
I think all they are. All right. So we wanna make a motion to accept the time extension request because there's really an option here.
I'll make that motion. I have a second.
Chelsea makes a motion, Naomi does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, noise control.
Next one here, follow up from noise, sound masking. Sound masking system. Uh, brought this up in discussion. It's a console. Also asked that we use demos of it. Uh, this. Demo. Two different locations, uh, one trim spin, there's a place that gave us a boat. That was Tricor video. Uh. Ended up basically there. Same system. For their choice. Tuffle. Differences with their speakers, but. Control box, everything was the same. Uh. Do I believe this would? Help? For city hall and sound masking, they get there. When you get here all the way across city hall and stuff. You hear somebody from front door. Uh, and we believe here. Quite good. That's different zones, they change the volume. It's based on. At one location, I don't try corner. It's very noticeable when you step away. In office, because they have like hallways, but they're not that. Always masking system. Installed yet. So you'd walk down that hall, you'd walk into the midroom. Hear noise system. Go down the hallway. Very different. Hearing, feeling, everything. And then like go into a doctor's room and. Show. The difference that you can hear. From like one perspective to another. It's not. Completely innate sound. But that's one mate's.
Muffling.
It muffles it, so it'd be like. He is. For one, that's a, that's. So. These speakers are very different, the. System from. The weight. My. We drive that. And those are white noise. But speakers from the sound masking system, they actually have. What they explained to me both places. So it's different speakers, so they have four different type. Type speakers and they vary them. Location. And they all tackle different frequencies. Well, in office, they would have. Speakers of the two speakers in there. And the two different types of speakers. All the way. So it's. That. So. Uh. Overall, when they then. Of patients said they. Fairly decent long time. But I consider. Uh, once I. Whether it's other. Uh. The prices we got. One was for ten thousand eight hundred. Twenty. Tricor. The print thing came here for thirty thousand dollars. Very old. Projects. They pop up. I would ask for those. They're.
Damn, that gives me heartache.
If we pay for it through. So it's fine. Dollars we lose.
The thing is, we need, we need this at city hall. If anybody spent any time over there, all that echo chamber stuff, we gotta, that's, we gotta get that squared away.
Uh, Tricor has installed that same system, obviously larger scale. Argo city hall, for example, it's the same system. Or your public schools have said that. It's the other one. Say, see that, you're hearing. Uh. It's more accessible and it's based on how much. But I am worried this. Certainly.
This is to help the staff. This is what this is about when you did, we need to do it.
It's kind of mortifying. See your other people go faster and.
That's what I mean, it's, this has just gotta be done. So. Which one did you prefer?
There, there it is, it's the same.
Same thing?
Tricor, I believe that. Cheaper version of speaker. Same one that you see all. So that's why. So this is it. We have done. Let's see here as example. Forty seven.
Yeah, I know, we've worked with them.
So how many do we get? In each room? Thirty, go back.
I would say it was around thirty six to forty four.
Okay.
It's quite a few. And what made this a little more challenging? That. We do have. Solid wall, we don't have. That'd be a little easier to install. That setup. But the setup we have, there's like an extra sheet rock ceiling. Or prospect. It would cost us a lot more to. See the. Stick. Seal. City hall.
Yeah, I mean hindsight, hindsight, we probably would have put the drop ceiling in, been looking at about ten thousand, but that doesn't mean that we still have the sound traveling across the space. Um, we do have, we have done offices before without the drop ceiling that don't have the same echoing as the space does, so it just. It must be, you know, the type of building with the, the floor. I don't, I don't know, it. It was surprising because we did inflate all the walls, which usually, you know, makes a big difference.
And it is pretty bad.
Yeah, so, um, hopefully this will. You know. Be the solution that makes it. Much better and in the end, I mean, it would be a wash from the drop ceiling, so. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this, guys? Like I said, this needs to get done. I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the noise system. Noise can't control system. You said why, what was the top?
I would just say.
Okay.
You worry about.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. They get a second on that.
Okay.
Okay, Naomi does a second on that. Um, being we're spending on this one, I'll do a roll call. Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yeah.
Chelsea?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Jim?
All right, three things for today, first is sixty seven street. And then.
True, I'm sorry, but. This is.
Nice. The water is always. Drives out. First river.
Any questions for Jim? All right, move on then. Breton, what do you got?
One man's ideally was in two weeks. There are twenty twenty, twenty twenty one audit. He'll work with pretty well. No. Yeah, but they're on site.
Yeah.
They're on site, the big scary visit. They're not done, obviously. So they. However. On site. Information. They're not into or on it right now. So are. Some positive. Uh. Other items I have is really inspections admin system. That mission, offer. Except if. I'm. I'll say. They accept. Admin system vision. Inspector. Project manager. Well. Awesome. That one. Except that. Start. Sorry. First I got those though. Situations.
Good, glad to hear those two accepted.
Oh, it works, we still. Still trying to find.
That's gonna be tough, I know that.
It's a problem.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's what I mean, that's why I know we're in the same boat, so. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, move on to portfolio reports. Um. Been in contact with a couple of people, something that's, we need to start looking at in town here, and I'm probably gonna, a couple of weeks from now, I'm gonna probably put together a meeting on this, but the daycare issue. Is going to be more of a concern around town or not, we don't have enough. And. We need to get more. Somehow or another, we gotta, we gotta come up with some ideas on this. So probably in a couple of weeks here, I'm gonna try and get a bunch of people together, uh, some of the daycare providers. And some of the people who've expressed concerns about this and sit down. And some of the people who've expressed concerns about this and sit down. See if we can come up with some ideas on this and what we can do. Um, as people. Brighters, whoever, yeah.
Yeah, and they're the ones that are.
No, it just, I don't know. That they can give us some ideas as to what some of the concerns are because they're running into the same issues that we all are, as it's staffing is a concern. Um. And that's, that's a deal, you know, and we don't have enough. We do not have enough in town here. We have all these young families with younger kids moving into the area here, and we don't have it. So we need to start from somewhere and start looking at this, see what we need to do. I can do that.
Yeah, I think, um, a friend of mine, she said that her mother-in-law or something like reached out to her.
Yeah, she wasn't the only one. It's funny. It's just like in the last couple, three days here, so.
Yeah, so. Our daycare Little Texas isn't taking school-aged kids.
Yeah.
And because of the staffing problems, um.
Changed their hours.
Even Kidventures only takes a handful of school-aged kids. So, and the YMCA at the school is, got about thirty kids on the waitlist and. I think she said she's number fifteen and they told her, don't even, don't even waste your time, like the, the chances of you getting in are slim, so. And that is just gonna get longer. So I mean. You know, it's, it's almost like people have to quit their jobs. Like, you know.
And that's, that's what I mean. We gotta come, we gotta have the discussion and see what we can do.
Yeah.
I don't know what, but let's just start talking.
Yeah, and so I think the, you know, the big thing is all ages. I know, I think there's a daycare in for permanent.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. You know, that's great, but I think.
That's not gonna solve.
The school-aged kids is a big problem. So finding out why. People don't want to open centers for school-aged kids and, and if there's some funding or something, um. Any way that the state helps with any of that, I don't know.
I don't know, but I'll, I'll dig around a little bit before we have this meeting to kind of see what's, what I know is available and see what.
Just, I, I think that they have to have. Staff to be able to drive and they don't want to staff it.
Well, I was talking to the lady that, um, at the day, and she said that most daycare staff doesn't want to work with older kids because they're. Probably a lot more work than the babies that he was holding all day, so.
So anyway, won't believe her there anymore, but I'll, uh, put a meeting together and see if it, like, try and get some more people round up on this thing. I don't need five hundred people there, but I, you know, a good. Eight to twelve, just to start the conversation and see where we go. So. Um, the other thing I, last couple of weeks here, did, met with the, uh, council candidates. You're, you're up next, Sarah, but thank you guys for meeting with me. I appreciate that and, uh. I'll get to, get you on the list here and we'll get that done. Uh, that's what I've got. So Sarah, what do you got?
Well, um, obviously recovering, uh, from a COVID thing. Um. Did notice on Saturday morning that we had quite a turnout for all of our rummage sales in Forest. Pretty happy to see that. We had a beautiful sunny day and a lot of people moved a lot of merchandise, so that was absolutely excellent. Uh, we do have cleanup day still coming, uh, this coming weekend on the twenty-first. And, uh, our neighboring community is, uh. I guess, how, how do I say it? Uh. Involved or next to the city of Fargo that is hosting a, a very large event, uh, is coming with the Fargo marathon. So, um, we'll see quite a bit of traffic and whatnot, um. In town for that. There might be some people coming out, protecting some things out, so I want to wish everyone luck on that. Other than that, um, just like I said. I think everybody's kind of tempted. I've been all over town here again, um, checking on folks, checking on different things, checking on developments. Um, so far, so good. So I don't have much else to speak.
Okay. Naomi?
I don't really have a lot. I already kind of hit on the things I wanted to talk about when it came to cleaning up the streets. The builders or whoever they are, um. Just stuff all over the road. This is really, really ridiculous having to swerve. And not hit. Pieces of wood and stuff like that. Um, and of course, I, that fence area looks kind of atrocious too, so. Um, working on cleaning that up would be really great. Um. And. That's pretty much all I got.
Got it. All right. Chelsea?
Um, I don't really have much, but I will say with the garage sale weekend, um. Because we market it for our city, like I've had a garage sale pretty much the last three years and we pretty, we pretty much sell all our stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And so many people come out and it's, it's awesome.
It was busy.
And it's so nice for the residents to be able to, I think, have that opportunity to get rid of stuff successfully because.
Before the, um.
Yeah. That, that piggybacks really nice and it's a great opportunity for, for people to clean out and make it worth it. Because before, if you try to have a garage sale here, it's just too far away. A lot of times and it's, you know, it's just not as worth it. So I hope that we always continue to do that and market it well.
Okay, sounds good. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second? It, Sarah does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.